For the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing for the invocation by Councilmember Franklin Thompson.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Lord, we pray for protection from the heat of political oppression, from the flames of political absurdity, and from the fiery darts that sometimes come from Councilman Gray's mouth. Amen.
I think some of them are challenging.
I knew I shouldn't have come today.
City Clerk certified publication today, record on October 23rd, notice for a council and regular city council meeting October 27th, 2015. A current copy of the Opening Act is posted in white binder on the east wall of the legislative chambers.
Thank you, and this Omaha City Council meeting is conducted in public and by law may only address the topics listed on the published agenda. The council will hear testimony but will not engage in debate of issues with the public at this meeting. During testimony, it is not appropriate to applaud or convey disapproval. These actions detract from the formal decorum of the meeting. At this time, please turn off or mute any electronic devices as well as Councilmember Franklin Thompson's. Before we begin, let me try and gain control again. Before we begin the formal meeting today, there is a proclamation that I've asked Councilmember Gary Grenat to read. It is a proclamation in honor of Tom Cavanaugh and the years of support and dedication he gave to the city and to the community. Mr. Grenat.
Thank you, Mr. President. For those that don't know, our Douglas County Clerk, Tom Cavanaugh, passed away recently. Tom and his family were well-known citywide, but in particular southeast Omaha. Several gathering spots back in the day were located in my district, and Tom and family members participated in having favorite beverages and lots of healthy discussion. And the council feels that it's appropriate that we pay some tribute to all the years of service that Tom gave. I can, just on a personal note, in the last fourteen and a half years that when I arrive in this building, I'm certainly going to miss bumping into Tom down in the parking garage or in the elevator vestibule. He always, no matter what type of day he was having or you were having, he could put a smile on your face, no matter what. And we need a lot more of those types of people, and it's sad that we've lost one of those. So if I may, for the record, Mr. President, whereas Thomas Tom Cavanaugh was Douglas County Clerk for thirty years, beginning in 1986, and whereas Tom challenged laws and ideas that were inappropriate for the community, and whereas Tom came from a family of politicians, having a brother on the county board and a brother serving as a United States Congressman, and whereas Tom was a faithful public servant and was known for putting people first, and whereas Tom believed that all people mattered. This is a simple proclamation because Tom liked to keep things simple. Now therefore be it resolved that the City Council of the City of Omaha is hereby grateful to Thomas Cavanaugh for his dedicated service and his dedication to his family. In witness whereof, we have set our hands and caused the official seal of the City of Omaha to be affixed on this 27th day of October 2015.
Thank you, Mr. Grenat. Mr. Jerem.
And if I could just take a second to say a few words to Tom was a neighbor of mine and in Morton Meadows and a fellow parishioner at Holy Cross, and it's been a real pleasure to have him in our neighborhood for decades. He was one of the neighbors, if he saw you out mowing your yard or just saw you out, you better have some time on your hands because he'd stop and he'd want to know all about how you were doing and occasionally was thirsty fellow. But more so than being a great neighbor and pitching in at the church, two things I wanted to share was that when he's around his daughters, how he would light up. And that included, most recently at our parish festival, he had been taken hostage, so to speak, by his brother and wheeled over into our parish festival at Holy Cross, and he was accompanied by his daughters, and he just had a sparkle in his eye and a smile on his face, notwithstanding the horrible battle he was waging against cancer at the time, and got to enjoy his favorite ice cream one last time. So I'll always remember that, and we'll miss him.
Thank you, and we'll make sure that gets to the Cavanaugh family as well. We'll make sure that proclamation gets there. Mr. Clerk.
Zoning ordinance on final agreement plan and board attachments. Item number five, ordinance to rezone property located northwest of Seventeenth and Cummings Streets from downtown service district to central business district. Property is also located within an existing area of civic importance overlay district. A planning board and planning department recommend approval.
Public hearing on agenda item number five is today. Proponents, please. Seeing none, are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Second, roll call.
Milton, Pauls, Thompson, Grenat, Jerem, Mr. President.
Yes.
Five is passed, six to zero. Item number six, ordinance to repeal the parking overlay district for property located southeast of Eighteenth and Clark Streets. A planning board and planning department recommend approval.
Public hearing on agenda item number six is today. Proponents, please. Seeing none, are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed. It's been moved and seconded, no further lights. Roll call.
Milton, Pauls, Thompson, Grenat, Jerem, Mr. President.
Yes.
Six is passed, six to zero. Item number seven, ordinance to rezone property located at 2218 Popleton Avenue from General Industrial District to R5 Urban Family Residential District. A planning board and planning department recommend approval.
Public hearing on agenda item number seven is today. Proponents, please. Seeing none, are there any opponents? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Second, no further lights. Roll call.
Milton, Pauls, Thompson, Grenat, Jerem, Mr. President.
Yes.
Seven is passed, six to zero. Item number eight, ordinance to rezone property located at 2602 North Twenty-Fourth Street from R5 Urban Family Residential District, R5 35 Urban Family Residential District, and R6 Low Density Multifamily Residential District to R5 Urban Family Residential District. A planning board and planning department recommend approval.
Public hearing on agenda item number eight is today. Proponents, please. Seeing none, are there any opponents? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Moved and seconded, no further lights. Roll call.
Milton, Pauls, Thompson, Grenat, Jerem, Mr. President.
Yes.
Eight is passed, six to zero. Item number nine, ordinance to rezone property located at 2641 and 2649 X Street from Heavy Industrial District to R4 Single Family Residential District, High Density. A planning board and planning department recommend approval.
Public hearing on agenda item number nine is today. Proponents, please. Seeing none, are there any opponents? It's been moved and seconded, no further lights. Roll call.
Milton, Pauls, Thompson, Grenat, Jerem, Mr. President.
Yes.
Nine is passed, six to zero. Item number ten, ordinance to rezone property located at 3114 Seward Street from R5 Urban Family Residential District to R4 Single Family Residential District, High Density. A planning board and planning department recommend approval.
Public hearing on agenda item number ten is today. Proponents, please. Seeing none, are there any opponents? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Moved and seconded, no further lights. Roll call.
Milton, Pauls, Thompson, Grenat, Jerem, Mr. President.
Yes.
Ten is passed, six to zero. Eleven and twelve are one case. Eleven is ordinance to rezone property located northwest of Thirty Fifth Street and Sorensen Parkway from General Industrial District to R4 Single Family Residential District. Twelve is ordinance to amend the boundaries of the ACI 2PL district of area of civic importance overlay district and incorporate in that district. These properties, A planning board and planning department recommend approval.
Public hearing on agenda items eleven and twelve are today. Proponents, please. Seeing none, are there any opponents? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Moved and seconded, no further lights. Roll call.
Milton, Pauls, Thompson, Grenat, Jerem, Mr. President.
Yes.
Eleven and twelve are passed, six to zero. Thirteen and fourteen are one case. Thirteen is ordinance to rezone property located at 711 North Saddle Creek Road from General Industrial District to Community Commercial District. Fourteen is ordinance to amend the boundaries of the major commercial corridor overlay district and incorporate in that district these properties. A planning board and planning department recommend approval.
Public hearing on agenda items thirteen and fourteen are today. Proponents, please. Seeing none, are there any opponents? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Second, no further lights. Roll call.
Milton, Pauls, Thompson, Grenat, Jerem, Mr. President.
Yes.
Thirteen and fourteen are passed, six to zero. Item number fifteen, ordinance to rezone property located at 13629 Corby Street from R3 Single Family Residential District, Medium Density, to R4 Single Family Residential District, High Density. A planning board and planning department recommend approval.
Public hearing on agenda item fifteen is today. Proponents, please. Seeing none, are there any opponents? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Moved and seconded, no further lights. Roll call.
Milton, Pauls, Thompson, Grenat, Jerem, Mr. President.
Yes.
Fifteen is passed, six to zero. Item sixteen is special use permit application to allow a broadcast tower with a waiver of height at 16144th Street is hereby approved. A planning board and planning department recommend approval. D and C are documents submitted, and D is a request for a thirteen-week layover.
Public hearing on agenda item number sixteen is today. Proponents, please. Oh, it's already, I'm sorry, it's already held.
I'd just like to move the layover until January.
January 26th.
January 26th, yeah. It's thirteen weeks.
Moved and seconded to lay this item over till January 26th. There are no further lights. Roll call.
Milton, Pauls, Thompson, Grenat, Jerem, Mr. President. Sixteen is laid over twenty-six weeks. Liquor, item number seventeen, Cafe Z at 2203 South Sixteenth Street. New application, new location. We have communications for planning, we have communications for an attorney requesting withdrawal of this application.
Move to withdraw. Moved and seconded to withdraw this license. No further lights. Roll call.
Milton, Pauls, Thompson, Grenat, Jerem, Mr. President.
Yes.
And Jerem passes a second time for a potential conflict of interest. Seventeen has been allowed withdrawal, five zero one passing. Item number eighteen, welcome in at 2332 South Twenty-Fourth Street. Class C liquor license to application, new location.
Public hearing on agenda item eighteen is today. Proponents, please.
Thank you. My name is John Kenny. I'm an attorney in Omaha, Nebraska. I'm here with Nicholas Riggles. At this time, we would, if it's appropriate, make a motion to adopt a resolution to grant the licenses.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Mr. Grenat.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Riggles, come up and identify yourself with your name and your address, please.
I'm Nicholas Riggles, and I'm at 2332 South Twenty-Fourth Street, Omaha, Nebraska.
Thank you. I'm the city council member that represents the area in which you are applying for a liquor license location, and I have a few questions. The spot that you're applying for has been probably a licensed establishment for a good number of years. Could you step in front of the microphone, please?
You can lift that too, if you want. If you can lift the microphone.
Okay.
Are you aware of that?
Yes. Yes, I am.
And have you had experience in the restaurant and liquor arena prior to making this application?
A few years of experience. This is, I currently am a licensed arborist. I hold about ten years of experience in owning a company, and this is something that I feel I can take on with the other experience of bartenders that I already have hired, and I feel I can make it happen.
Do you currently live on the premise?
I do.
Okay. And will this be your full-time business, or do you have a different business that you own? And if you do, would you explain to the council what that is?
Well, I'm a licensed arborist. During the summer, it keeps me pretty busy. It's a, I climb trees for a living. I've been doing it for about ten years. That in the summer is full-time. This bar, my bartender's hired, I think they would run it most of the time. I would pretty much just manage it, pay the bills, and keep inventory.
Will you be an individual that will have a constant presence, setting aside that you do live on the property, but will you have a constant presence when that establishment is up and running if this license is granted?
Every day. Yeah, because there's a house that's connected to the bar.
Are you familiar with the history of that facility?
I am, and it's not going to be that way as it was the past. It's going to be a friendly neighborhood, quiet bar.
What is the target audience for your patrons?
Thirty to fifty, you know. I want to keep it calm and professional, nothing wild or out of the ordinary, so.
The previous owner, no longer with us, a good operator. Some of the neighbors felt that it was a biker bar. Do you have any intention of catering to that type of clientele?
No. We aren't going to put up any kind of signs or logos that represent that.
Will you be having any type of music?
We were thinking about having outside bands. We're not going to do that now. We might have jazz inside, and that's as far as it would go.
And the typical noise that's generated from such an establishment, you'll be able to control that in the interior of the bar?
Yes.
To the north of that bar is a fairly good-sized parking lot, is that correct?
Right, next to VIP limousine.
And will there be any conflict, since you've mentioned that you have a tree trimming service? You store your equipment on that lot as well?
On the commercial property in the back, the far back.
Okay. Which would still allow for normal vehicle traffic to park that, for patrons of the bar, correct?
Yes, correct.
Will this be an operation of seven days per week? Six. And what would be your hours of operation?
Five to two.
Five to two?
Five to two.
Okay. And how many days a week are you planning currently to have a music venue there?
Maybe once a month.
And that, I believe you said, in the form of jazz?
Quiet jazz, inside.
Dr. Thompson, that might be of interest. You caught me.
Have your phone call my phone.
You're okay?
How does this mic start?
You're wound up today.
How did your mic start working again? That's not weird. Well, that's all right.
The, just so you know, directly across the street from you are several senior citizens, okay, that have phoned me and are concerned about another license operating there in the same previous format. I assured them that I'd be asking questions to that effect. You have assured the council that that's not the type of clientele that you're going after, that you will be able to control the volume that's coming out of that bar from inside, so it doesn't emanate and, as we normally put it, knock the knickknacks off the walls of the houses across the street.
Right, absolutely.
Okay. I can please be assured of this. There are two families across the street that, no matter what time, what day, if something goes wrong at that bar, that disturbs them, it's not a 911 call. They'll be more than happy to dial my ten-digit number and want me to have you on the chopping block.
Right.
So there's some very close eyes that are going to be watching. In fact, I talked to both of them again today, both families today. They are very concerned. They are handicappedable, but they couldn't make it down because of their disabilities, but they have no problem using the phone, using a computer, and making their concerns known. And on a good side, having a couple of extra sets of eyes is maybe a good thing for the property as well.
Right.
If something is going on that, when you're not open, but they would report that as well, too. And I know that they are that type of a family.
Sure.
But I find it only fair that, my phone rang off the hook. If there was one loud Harley Davidson leaving that place, I can guarantee you that Gary Grenat got a call.
Right.
In regards to that. So I'm stressing as much as I possibly and legally can that.
It'll be quiet.
There'll be a set of, a good set of eyes and ears watching from the eastern part of Twenty-Fourth Street. I have, as my colleagues know, that I'm, I try to give everybody at least one chance, and you are a first-time applicant for a liquor license. This council makes recommendations to the Nebraska Liquor Control Commission, whether we agree or not, and then they have the final decision. And I'm sure your attorney has made you well aware of what the process is.
Right.
So I will, I will end with this question, since I've mentioned the Nebraska Liquor Control Commission. Is there anything in your application that would raise a minimum of a yellow flag with that commission, that they would want to take some sort of action prior to making their decision?
The live entertainment, which I scratched off. We're not going to do that outside.
Councilman, if I could be heard.
Say your name.
Say your name.
John Kenny, for the record. I have reviewed the application for the first time in the last 24 hours. The list of misdemeanor charges is incomplete. My client did list one of his misdemeanor charges. I've looked on the Justice Computer System at all of my client's prior history, and those are all very minor charges, and anything that's recent is related to traffic. There are no drug or alcohol charges, even going back into almost a juvenile record. And what I, what I noticed from the application is sort of a ham-handed part, I'm sorry, but sort of an amateurish approach to the application process. And I can amend the application on behalf of my client, but it's fairly readily discernible to find some misdemeanors that weren't specifically listed on the application. And so by asking that question, Councilman, I want to make sure you're aware that my client, as a young person in seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, more than 10 years ago, in fact, if he had come to me prior to the last 48 hours, I would have talked about expungement of some of these misdemeanor records. I just want to point that out, that there's an incompletion there that I think the State Patrol may have inquired about, and that's certainly something that we can detail for you. And the only other issue that I wanted to point out in looking at the application, there is a reference to 30 years of experience. Obviously, my client's 32. He would have to be starting to serve alcohol at the age of two, if that were to be accurate. And so obviously, there's a little bit of, again, a ham-handed thing there where I think there was a reference to the employees and the people that are going to be helping him. So if you looked at it technically and you wanted to take a long, hard look at the application, you might scratch your head at that indication, but those are the only, the only two things that I saw that might possibly give rise to further inquiry. The final thing I'll say, and I promise I'll stop talking because I don't think you want to hear from me as much as you want to hear from my client, but there's no outdoor beer garden, there's nothing that's going to be outside. And I think prior history included a beer garden and outdoor music, and that's, that's just not part of the application, and we won't, my client won't have a license for that. That's all I have.
Thank you. Nick, if you could come back up to the microphone. The, your attorney raised another issue. I wasn't going to touch on it, but I'm not overtly concerned. I have a copy of the criminal history in front of me, and the entry that's on here is 13 years old. And I'm sure that, from what you have said, that things in your life have changed.
Right.
Dramatically.
Dramatically.
So I'm not overtly concerned about that. In your, and I'm sure your attorney has advised you that you and your staff should take the liquor management courses that are available.
Right.
Okay. And you're willing to do that, if you haven't done so already?
Right, yeah.
Okay. I don't think that they were available when you were two, but so just when they, just to clear the record, you were not consuming or serving alcohol at the age of two, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. All right. So I will just revert back to my original closing statement was. So I, I will just revert back to my original closing statement was that I try to give everybody at least one chance, and it's your first time before us, and duly warned about the eyes.
I understand.
So I'm, I'll, I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. There are no further lights. Roll call.
Milton, Paul, Thompson, Gurnett.
Yes.
Jerem.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
18 is adopted. Six to zero. Item number 19.
Thank you. Counselman, I'm having my client write down his cell phone number and his email address so that the folks in the neighborhood can contact him, and he can go out to them before the bar even opens and talk to them.
Give it to the clerk.
Thank you.
Item number 19, Calabar's 6801 Railroad Avenue. Class C liquor license, new application, new location.
Public hearing on agenda, item 19 is today.
Claudia Rios doing business at Calabar.
Address, please.
1308 Sunshine Boulevard, Bellevue, Nebraska, 68103.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Seeing none, are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Been moved and seconded. No further lights. Roll call.
Milton.
Yes.
Paul.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Gurnett.
Yes.
Jerem.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
19 is adopted. Six to zero. Item number 20 is Merrick Gourmet, 504 North 33rd Street. Class I liquor license, new application, new location. It does not conform to Rule 7 of the City Council Liquor Rules. It's 50 feet to Griffin Park, so you need to suspend that rule if you wish to grant.
Thank you. Public hearing on agenda, item 20 is today. Proponents, please.
Mr. President, members of Mike Kelly, 71, 34 Pacific. Hearing here for the applicant. Mr. Lucy and Mr. Burns are here if you have any questions of them. This is at 33rd and California. It's a small, little restaurant there. They've been operating for three or four years without alcohol, and they've made it, but they obviously need it to survive. My understanding is the Neighborhood Association does support this, so I would ask you to waive the park rule and to vote favorably on the application.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Your motion?
Yes.
Second. Roll call.
This is on suspension of Rule 7. Milton.
Yes.
Paul.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Gurnett.
Yes.
Jerem.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Jerem passes. Second time for potential conflict of interest. It is granted. 501 passing.
Now we need to move to reinstate the rules.
Yep.
Been moved and seconded. No further lights. Roll call.
Milton.
Yes.
Paul.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Gurnett.
Yes.
Jerem.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Jerem passes. Second time for potential conflict of interest. The rules are reinstated. Item number 21, Siesta S Suites, Omaha 6990 Dodge Street. Class I liquor license, new application, new location. They are adding an outdoor gatehouse and pool area.
Good afternoon.
Public hearing on agenda, item number 21 is today. Proponents, please.
Good afternoon. My name is Tim O'Neill. I'm at 800 Lincoln Square, 121 South 13th Street, Lincoln, Nebraska. I'm happy to say this is the third time I've appeared before you on this property, so I think we all know it pretty well. It's a great property. New ownership, new commitment to reinvest in Omaha. I'd be happy to ask any questions if you have.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Been moved and seconded. There are no further lights. Roll call.
Milton.
Yes.
Paul.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Gurnett.
Yes.
Jerem.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
21 is adopted.
Thank you. Good to see you.
Six to zero. Item number 22, German American Society, 3717 South 120th Street. Request permission for an addition to the present Class C liquor license of a lower level approximately 87 by 60 in an outdoor area, 59 by 41 to the west.
Public hearing on agenda, item 22 is today. Proponents, please.
My name is Karen Hovannik. I'm the treasurer of the German American Society. My home address is 1626 North 137th Street, Omaha 68154.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Public hearing is closed. Moved and seconded. There are no further lights. Roll call.
Milton.
Yes.
Paul.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Gurnett.
Yes.
Jerem.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
22 is approved. Six to zero. Item number 23, The X Lounge at 1604 Northwest Radio Highway. Request permission for deletion of the present Class C liquor license of an area approximately 22 by 40 to the south.
Public hearing on agenda, item 23 is today. Proponents, please.
Candace Bank, 1604 Northwest Radio Highway, Omaha, Nebraska, 68104.
I'll try not to laugh, Karen.
He started it first, but okay. I'm here to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Been moved and seconded. Roll call.
Milton.
Yes.
Paul.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Gurnett.
Yes.
Jerem.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
23.
I'll try not to expect, try not to expect it every time.
Not seeing you guys again. See you later.
Item number 24, Veterans FW Benson, number 2503 at 89004 Military Avenue. Request permission to appoint Daniel Raby, manager.
Public hearing on agenda, item number 24 is today. Proponents, please.
My name is Daniel Raby. I'm the quartermaster presently at the VFW Post 2503. My address, 148 19th Sprague Street, Omaha, Nebraska, 68116. And I request permission to have my name put on the liquor license. Prior name that was on there has been deleted.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents? Moved and seconded. There are no further lights. Roll call.
Milton.
Yes.
Paul.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Gurnett.
Yes.
Jerem.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
24 is approved.
Thank you.
Six to zero. Consent agenda. Any member of the City Council may cause an item placed on the consent agenda to be removed. Items removed consent agenda shall be taken up by City Council immediately following the consent agenda in the order in which they were removed unless otherwise provided by City Council Rules of Order.
Public hearing on agenda items number 25 through 27 were held on October 20th, 2015. Moved and seconded. No further lights. Roll call.
Milton.
Yes.
Paul.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Gurnett.
Yes.
Jerem.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
25 through 27 are passed. Six to zero.
The public hearing on agenda items number 28 through 35 are today. If you wish to address the City Council regarding these items, please come to the microphone, indicate the agenda item number you wish to address, identify yourself by your name, address, who you represent, and if you are a proponent or an opponent. Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Moved and seconded. No further lights. Roll call.
Milton.
Yes.
Paul.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Gurnett.
Yes.
Jerem.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
28 through 35 are adopted. Seven to zero. Resolutions. Item number 36, resolution that the law department is authorized to make an offer to allow judgment to be taken against the city in the pending case of Peak versus the city.
Public hearing on agenda, item number 36 is today. Proponents, please. Seeing none, are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Moved and seconded. No further lights. Roll call.
Milton.
Yes.
Paul.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Gurnett.
Yes.
Jerem.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
36 is adopted. Six to zero. Item 37, resolution that the law department is authorized to make an offer to allow judgment against the city in three related cases, Rivera versus the city.
Public hearing on agenda, item number 37 is today. Proponents, please. Seeing none, are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Been moved and seconded. There are no further lights. Roll call.
Milton.
Yes.
Paul.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Gurnett.
Yes.
Jerem.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
37 is adopted. Six to zero. Pursuant to City Council Rule 70, the public hearing on agenda items number 38 through 44 should be held on the third reading. Ordinance on second reading, item 45, ordinance clearing of the state requiring certain private property for the purpose of constructing 72nd and Pacific Street Traffic Light Structure Project.
Public hearing on agenda, item number 45 is today. Proponents, please. Seeing none, are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Next item.
46, ordinance approving redevelopment tax and financing loan agreement with 1234 South 10th Street, implement the Rose on South Hills Tax and Financing Redevelopment Project for the project located at 1228, 1230, 1234 South 10th and 122933 South 11th.
Public hearing on agenda, item number 46 is today. Proponents, please.
Good afternoon. Bridget Hadley, City Planning, here to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Next item.
Item 47, ordinance approving redevelopment tax and financing loan agreement with 541 South 24th Street Limited Liability Company to implement the Sterling Apartments Tax and Financing Redevelopment Project located at 541 South 24th Street.
Public hearing on agenda, item 47 is today. Proponents, please.
Bridget Hadley, City Planning, here to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Next item.
Item 48, ordinance approving redevelopment tax and financing loan agreement with 3101 South 24th Street LLC to implement the 3101 South 24th Street Tax Increment Financing Redevelopment Project Plan.
Public hearing on agenda, item 48 is today. Proponents, please.
Bridget Hadley, City Planning, here to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Mr. Gurnett.
Didn't want you to leave without at least answering one question. 3101 South 24th Street, my district. This is the start of the process all over again for that project, is that correct?
This actually, for the TIF approval process, this will complete the TIF approval process so that they can begin construction. And I know the developer is here in the back if you should have any more specific questions, but this, this approval, well, this public hearing and then the subsequent passage, should that happen, would complete the TIF approval process.
Thanks for hanging in there with us up there. I know it's been a tough road to hoe, but it's, we're going to get there.
Yes.
And it'll be a meatpacking plant that's going to be converted. It's going to be a real cool place when it gets done.
Okay.
Thank you. Thanks, Mr. President.
Thank you. Next item.
Item 49, ordinance approving redevelopment tax and financing loan agreement with DANA Partnership to implement the Turner Park Residence and 31 Dodge Tax and Financing Redevelopment Project Plan for projects located at 3102, 3106 Dodge and 118 North 31st Street.
Public hearing on agenda, item 49 is today. Proponents, please.
Bridget Hadley, City Planning, here to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, the public hearing is closed. Next item.
Item 50 is ordinance to approve the proposal and agreement for Best Buy Science to provide install, place, maintain, and remove bus stop benches with and without advertising. We have a request from the Parks Department to continue the public hearing to third reading.
It's been moved and seconded. No further lights. Roll call. I'm sorry, there's a public hearing today.
Yeah.
Public hearing on agenda, item number 50 is today. Proponents, please. Seeing none, are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed.
So don't, it's not...
So don't close.
Don't close.
Okay.
Anyone who wanted to talk could have continued.
Okay, to continue the public hearing. Okay, sorry about that.
Okay, the motion is continue public hearing, third reading. Milton.
Yes.
Paul.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Gurnett.
Yes.
Jerem.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Thank, yes. This is all.
Public hearing is continued with third reading.
Uh...
Item number 51, ordinance to accept the bid of Heinemann's Fire Equipment to provide firefighter turnout gear for the Omaha Fire Department.
Public hearing on agenda, item 51 is today. Proponents, please. Seeing none, are there any opponents? Public hearing is closed.